All right, carry around here someplace.
All right, we're going to reconvene an open session at seven o'clock. Kate Massonati.
Here.
Paul Whitford.
Here.
Michelle Brusseau.
Yeah.
James Rustivo.
Here.
And I Carol Vetter am here and Brad Shear could not be here tonight. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. May I have a motion to seal the minutes of executive session?
I'll make a motion to seal the minutes of executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. There were no votes taken in executive session. So next up will be comments from the community. All right, there's nobody that signed the clipboard, but it just want to, anybody want to chance to come to the podium? Come on up. Just please, please state your name. Okay.
Good evening, members of the school department and the school committee. I have been up here trying to ask for a few years, trying to bring in psychological evaluations. I know I'm at the bottom of the sheet and I was requesting intention to homeschool my child. I have tried everything of night school, double summer schools, after school programs. He trunts up to URI all the time. Johnny Keats in a, now with the youth and I, I'm trying. His last RICAS goes start at third grade. He had two percentile. Fourth grade, he had one percentile. He entered fifth grade at first grade reading level. And the principal and the assistant principal, Dr. Gordon said, we'll give it a try. If it goes down again, then we'll look at it. He went to another school and it went down again, zero and zero. The only consolation prize of this RICAS thing for my grandson is that his growth percentile was up. He is 35% ahead of all the other children who got zeros last year and this year. He's grown. So I am just, I have a plan to, you know, work with the brilliant micro schools. I will have all the additional people to help me. It's an online school. It's for students with dyslexia, dysgraphia, dyscalculia, PTSD. Let's go on depression. Now he's in, going into eighth grade. They put all A pluses and he's doing multiplications and divisions and fractions and this and that. He can only count, multiply by twos, one, two. And if you have enough fingers and toes out, you can add up to 20. You ask him, Trev, what's 19 takeaways? He will fiddle, he'll back up. This kid is five and a half feet tall. He's overdosing on food, 201 pounds. I'm trying to get him out there, you know, surfing and in the youth center and pickleball and everything. But I need to save my son's mental history. He found his mom dead on the couch. February 20, March 26th, month after his seventh birthday, dead of an overdose. Father figure was raising him. He told Trev and I not to visit. I'll get in touch with you. And he drank and drugged himself into brain surgery. He's dead, Papa and Mama. So I got little Trevor to come live with me, my son. Total bad behavior all around. He is an honorably discharged veteran, but he is not to be able to raise that boy and I want to bring him to a school that would help him grow. So that was my, you guys need to hear all the platforms. I was just intending to possibly homeschool him to save his life. We have a history of suicides, five on both sides of our family. It's a, I'm sorry, my brother, my father, his mother, his dad and grandmother. So anyway, that's what, do you need this credit? Should I read it? Did you guys read it? You want me to read it? No.
It's okay. I mean, you're, yeah, no, thank you for coming and sharing, but you're good. And if you do need any help with the paperwork, you know, you could send us your contact information and we can help you. Oh, she's on, oh, okay, good. Oh. Okay. Thank you. All right, Dora, we're just gonna close community comment. Did you want to say something?
Short and sweet tonight, Doral Beasley. So I just went down to West Kingston School and it's all been repaved. It's all been repaved. It's all been repaved. It's all been repaved. But but the adjustable basketball hoops are not in yet. So I'm assuming what do you have four weeks to go that they're going to be put in before school starts? This was first brought up to the attention of the school committee, not this school committee, at least four years ago, maybe five. The second thing is tonight you're talking about a contract award for a trainer, athletic trainer to to be available at every football game. There was an article in the Boston Globe about a week ago about a high school football player in Massachusetts who had multiple concussions in a school system that didn't have an athletic trainer. His life has been altered completely. He is no longer the person he was. So I'm gonna drop this off here, heading over to the town council tonight. So that's the end of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beasley. Right. With that, we're going to close public comment. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to remove item B from the consent agenda and table it for a future meeting.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
So we are, have removed and we have tabled item B.
And then, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. That will bring us to item five, school committee business. First up, if we have the contract approval for the facilities and operations director.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is my pleasure to announce this evening, although he is, he is not with us, that we have a contract agreement with Mr. Liam Lynch to serve as our next facilities director. Mr. Lynch brings over 10 years of experience in property management from the private sector, overseeing office, commercial, industrial, and residential properties. Prior to the last 10 years, Mr. Lynch served six plus years as the regional facilities manager for Aramark at Providence Public Schools. Both interviews, both first round and second round interview committees applaud Mr. Lynch's diverse skillset and knowledge that he, that we believe will serve the unique conditions and demands required of our director of facilities here at South Kingstown School District. I would be remiss though, as we announce Mr. Liam Lynch, that I also did not give our sincere thanks to Mr. John Gould, who's here this evening for his selfless dedication and service as the interim director. We are going to be able to hit the ground running this new school year, thanks to his efforts. And so again, I anticipate Mr. Lynch to meet the public at our next scheduled meeting on the 26th.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the contract of approval?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for the facilities and operations directed as presented in executive session by the superintendent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. And I just do want to say thank you to Mr. Gould for all your hard work and stepping in when we needed you. Thank you so much. All right. And that will bring us to item B, discussion action. Bid number 2464 award refuse removal and recycling services.
I'll make a motion to, oh. Do we get some insight into it? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve bid number 2464 for refuse removal and recycling.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening. I'm here just to answer any questions. I have nothing specific that I wanted to offer, so I'm happy to answer a question.
Yes, that motion passes. All right. So discussion, number C, discussion action bid award district electricity supply.
Motion to approve the bid award for the district electricity supply.
Right. Does anyone have any questions? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. Next item, discussion action bid award Broad Rock Middle School lower roof replacement. Do we have a motion?
Motion for the bid award for the Broad Rock Middle School lower roof replacement.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And motion passes. I do want to state for the record that Kate Manson had to go to town hall and is not present for these votes. So just for the record, thank you, Terry. That will bring us to item E, discussion action contract award athletic trainer.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract award for the athletic trainer.
Good.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. That will bring us to discussion action contract award world language textbooks, Broad Rock Middle School.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract award for the world language textbooks for Broad Rock Middle School.
All right. Any questions? I do have a question. Okay, Michelle.
Mr. Padraza. Are these physical textbooks?
Yes.
Do we? Do we need? I, I don't know. In, in my educational world, all our textbooks are online. Is there a difference in, in price? Is the, were online textbooks researched? Is this the only thing we can get or the best thing we can get? It is like 15 questions in one. I had coupons for every one of those free ones.
So it, ultimately, this is a sole source. So this isn't, this is a continuation of the curriculum, although not required under Rhode Island general law for meeting the HQIM or the high quality curriculum materials. We aim to provide that regardless of whether it's required or not. So this is, and we do have a, a history of wonderful world language achievement in the district. And in terms of both the ongoing curriculum, as well as making sure that every department is equipped with high quality curriculum that is both internally and externally vetted. This is our recommendation to what I'll need to do some more research. And in many cases, or in some cases of whether this is a textbook, whether this allows online access in addition to physical textbooks, or if it's just physical textbooks. Generally, they're both intertwined nowadays. However, in some instances, we are providing classroom based texts. And so that those are, are present and then those online, if needed, can be accessed as well as providing physical copies if needed. So again, as of right now. So yes, they're based on the Vista. It both include both the hardcover and access to the online version, and that is a six year license.
Thank you very much. All right. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. That will bring us to G, discussion action, maintenance and facilities capital fund budget update.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school committee. I provided for you this evening a summary update of the capital budget in preparation of what we call the Form 100 notifying Rhode Island Department of Education of our planned capital expenditures for the upcoming school year so that they can plan the budget payment to the school district or to the town in FY '27, which would be next school year. So there was a report that I had found regarding the capital budget that was prepared by the prior chief financial officer in early June. That appears to be the capital budget the school committee had been informed of. And so I created a roster showing the expenditures that would have been reported to you on June 2nd or the memo date, June 2nd. I also had a package from the former CFO, if you guys do, his communication preliminarily going to the Rhode Island Department of Education. And those items that were listed to the ride was only about $590,000 out of the $1.1 million that had been communicated to you folks back in June. So I've prepared a roster with the revisions indicating additional items that school committee may not have been aware of, or I couldn't find the documentation for. In particular, there were installation of fire alarm initiating devices for two schools. And the repair, replace lavatory fixtures at two elementary schools. Those items were listed, and so I'm presenting those this evening as what was included because we had to get the ride report out, reporting to Ride. So the total that was reported to Ride, which includes the $400,000 parking lot that was appropriated and authorized by the school committee last year, but it didn't start to take place until July. I had to let Ride know that we're looking at about $1.6 million worth of expenditures for the upcoming school year. And they're going to base their housing aid back to the community based on that number as long as we have the budgets meet these number projections that we're reporting to them. I think hopefully it's pretty self explanatory with the guys in the chart that I provided. Happy to answer any questions, but we did build in as a, as a side point, the contracts that have been awarded compared to what you were advised back in June. So that we actually in fact had some cost reductions based on the bid results that we received and that you previously approved. So we made those adjustments. So the net impact is relatively minimal. There's significant funding available to take care of the differential, which is about $147,000 from where we were before. The ride report that we provided does not commit the district to those expenditures. This is just advisory to the Department of Education so they can plan to pay us if the projects are completed. So if there's any reservations on any of the projects that are presented this evening, we still have time that the project doesn't necessarily have to be undertaken. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but that was my understanding of the various capital projects that were extracted from your five year capital plan. So I have gone through that in depth. All of these items have, are in fact listed on your five year plans, and now it's just the execution involved. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, so this, thank you, Mr. Furucchi, for the breakdown. I appreciate that. The number we're looking at, the last page, page three, the 1.6 million, is that the total expected capital funded expenditure for this upcoming fiscal year?
That's correct. At this point, yes. Of which $400,000 was, was authorized and appropriated last year. Contractor is executing for July delivery. So our report to the Rhode Island Department of Education would be redundant. So last year at this time, we reported we would do that driveway for $400,000. It didn't take place. But Ride needs to know that that project is scheduled this year. And what happens is they take all of the communities Form 100s telling what is being committed for, for the upcoming school year and turn create a roster that goes to the legislature so that the funds are then appropriated in January to pay the school districts the following October. So that's why it's a repeat. So it's not an additional above and beyond where you were prepared to expend those funds. You've already acknowledged that prior year. So that those funds are already committed and are available today.
Where it says replace lavatory fixtures, says KES and W KES. Does that, was that done at just West Kingston or is it Matunick and West Kingston?
Thank you for the clarification. It is in fact a Matunick Elementary School.
Okay.
Apologies for the short form, yes.
Does this, I know we have a requirement to spend certain amount on maintenance for the schools of 3% of our budget. Does this get us to that number? Are there other, other things that would count towards that that are not included in this?
There are other things for what they call maintenance of support. The actual cost associated with any type of maintenance people, staff wise, a portion of the director, because they oversee the maintenance of buildings is appropriate. So you have those types of support costs on top of any of the maintenance and under the UCOA coding, there's 54 UCOAs. So our general fund is paying for maintenance items. And so we're able to report those. It's 3% of your operating budget is what the obligation. Last year we achieved it, not last year, excuse me, 2024, the district achieved it. The anticipation of having the $400,000 drive take place last year would have allowed us to achieve it for 2025. Unfortunately, the execution of the bidding and the contract award, et cetera. The vendor chosen couldn't get materials and staff, et cetera. They couldn't, could not get on site until after July 1, which pushes it into the following fiscal year. So we did come up short by about $250,000 for the current 2025 for the maintenance of effort. And there's conversations that I am having with Ride. Because not the penalty, but the situation is if you come up short, why deduct that from your housing aid for the upcoming year and sets it aside for specific maintenance so we can turn in bills to maintain our buildings in the future? But I am working with them to have the 1.6 when we go to turn those in next year. That anything came up short in '25, they would take it out of the $500,000 that I have presented. That's what the community is looking at so that the town would not be negatively impacted this year if they were expecting some portion of the, of the projects that were completed in their operating budget or their capital budget or their debt service budget, those types of things. So I don't see it being an impact on the community at this point. That's what, it's a positive conversation that I have had with Rhode Island Department of Ed on that particular issue.
Just to clarify, so if we missed the mark by 250,000, they kind of like set aside embargo, reserve those funds. So when we spend, we can't count that for '26 because it's, we've needed to complete '25.
When we spend it, we can count it for the year in which it's expensed, but if we're over, they will reimburse us that cash.
Oh, okay. Okay. Now I understand. I know a lot of different parts moving. And my, my second question is that we have the, an increase in the capital budget. And is this mean we're taking more out of the fund balance?
Yes, about $140,000. That's correct.
Thank you. I assume these things, I just want to make sure I understand it completely. So that sounds great. Any questions?
So if I'm understanding, these projects will still go forward. Right?
Yes.
So that it's just that we're showing how budgetary, budgetarily? That a word? Yeah. Okay, good. That where the changes are.
Correct.
So that will definitely still complete all of these things.
I would hope so. And hearing that the new facilities director is on board and with Mr. Gould's assistance and with my involvement in committing my services to make sure that you get the great CFO that comes in and will address the purchasing and the bidding processes. The bidding getting out on a timely basis is the trigger that we have to be aware of. And so if these projects are moving forward, the quicker that we can onboard the new facilities director, I will meet with them. We'll go down those items that we need some assistance in organizing and getting those bids organized. That's the trigger point. And I think from what I've heard, that a lot of bids didn't go out until April, May timeframe this year, which pushes us, pushed us into the summer when they actually could have come on. And so it didn't get accomplished last year. So I'll work tightly with the, with John and the new facilities director to get them at least on the right path to be timely on all of these projects.
So for example, on the like, where it says they install the exit signage, where the budget reduction is to zero, 75,000 to zero.
Correct.
And then it says that it's a non-capital issue. A non-capital issue, but that as Madam Chair has identified, it's coming from the general. And it's, so it's still costing us that amount.
Yep. And that will go towards our maintenance of effort for maintaining in the, in the 3% of operating budget. What was under effort and, and working with Mr. Gould was the replacement of the equipment was anticipated, but when the folks came in, it was the equipment's fine. We need to replace batteries or we need to replace bulbs or something of that nature. So it was very incidental versus we got to replace or improve the equipment that, in which it runs. And so the communication link between facilities and the district administrative office finance in particular, I think need to be worked. And that has to do with your transition. I know you have your facilities director step down. And so some of the things that were taking place, they didn't get pushed along. And so it kind of fell through the cracks that way. That's typically what would happen. So hopefully that's been resolved as we start to unfold the new year with the new staff.
So the items that were taken out of the capital budget because they're deemed just repair and not capital projects. Is there adequate funds in the existing budget for those items in operating?
I've been advised, yes.
Okay, so the, so really.
We did review those extensively to make sure that they were aligned. And I'm not aware of any concerns at this point.
Okay, so we don't need budget amendments for that or?
Not aware of, no.
Okay, great. Other questions?
Mr. Furucchi, I just want you to clarify something for me. The 3% maintenance requirement by Ride. Monies that count towards that 3% can come either from our operating budget or from our capital budget. It doesn't matter as long as it's a maintenance type project.
That's correct. And in addition to, I learned myself this year that interest on debt service that may be paid by the town and not even recorded on the school books is also inclusive. So we added about $250,000 in interest payments that were made by the town on our behalf of the debt that's, or the mortgage that's already in place for historical projects. Not the principal, but the, because those projects are targeted in another manner, but the interest payments on an annual basis. But the because those projects are targeted in another manner, but the interest payments on an annual basis also got added in order to achieve that 3%.
And some of the. Salaries for our maintenance director and our maintenance workers also.
Correct, yes.
Out towards that 3%?
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? No. All right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
I don't think it was.
Oh, did we?
Not for this one.
Okay.
I think there's a lot. I was actually going to ask, do we need a motion for this?
I'll make a motion to approve the um. Capital fund budget update as presented by Mr. Ferrucci.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to H. Discussion Action. Chief Financial Officer, Serge.
Thank you. Um, as you have all experienced over the past few months, um. Our Chief Financial Officer position now has or had big shoes to fill and now have even bigger shoes to fill. Um, obviously based on the the expertise and the again dedication and commitment to South Kingstown Public Schools. Although here on an interim basis, the time, effort and energy that that Mr. Ferrucci has dedicated and the the quality of of work is um is exceptional. Um, and so again, a high bar um has been set indeed. Um, and that high bar will be placed into uh into action tomorrow where we uh once we once again enter round one. Of interviews for uh in our Chief Financial Officer, Serge. What I would like to uh have a discussion among the committee and why this is before you is uh should that um obviously with the. Start of school. Um, and the aforementioned backlog or um that we've now kind of worked through. Um, and the interim basis of Mr. Ferrucci, should that interview process not have other can't yield any candidates? Um, I would like to entertain whether it be a recruiter or looking into uh taking on a purchase. Uh, looking at purchase services, moving the position if need be um to a purchase service so that an auditing and a general accounting of the books. Um, can can continue uh until a a permanent uh. Individual is found or recruited um to meet that. That would be an in both cases. Um, outside of breakage assigned to this position, this this would be an unbudgeted. Uh, change. However, again, due to the importance of the position, it is something and a change of strategy. It's not something that. Uh, I would want to do or spring on the committee uh without without conversation. And that's why it's here before you this evening.
So you're not looking to do anything tonight. You want to have these rounds of interviews first, correct?
Yes, we're we're going to, you know, we're going to, I'm optimistic. Uh. Both springs are true. Um, so I'm going to go in optimistic, however, uh expect the best plan for the worst. And should that uh happen, again, reposting on school spring, crossposting to um. So I was about to say Zillow. So no, we're not selling councils. Uh, indeed, um. That we've we've run that course now in the district multiple times. And I think that in terms of um. You know, continuing the same strategy, expecting different results is is potentially not going to happen. And so I would like to uh. You know, entertain that that discussion and or have approval should the uh should the committee need? Should we need to go in that direction that I can expedite that process, uh keeping the committee informed? That's why it's before you this evening.
Would would you like us? To have a backup plan tonight? Or are you willing to say what if these interviews don't go well, you'll bring it to the next meeting?
I I will bring it to the next meeting. However, based on where based on where we are, I would want to. To to go in one of those, to go at least in one of those directions or and start investigating them. Um, in terms of a recruiter, we could do that as an individual contract for services, which would not. Uh, I believe did not require the RFP, but we would could be done at an interview. Was that? It could be done on the interview uh basis. I have not started to research firms or done uh work on that end. I wanted to again get feedback from the committee uh in terms of investigating all options available, whether. Um, the two presented here are one that are appealing or not appealing, or if there's even others that need to be considered.
In light of the situation that we find ourselves in with a financial officer. Um, I would I would say that if you find that the. Folks are being interviewed tomorrow. Do not fit South Kingstown. I I would agree with um finding a recruiter or recruiting firm and. Personally, I think that if we discuss that tonight. Then by the time we meet again in a couple of weeks. Um. Mr. Padraza could have some suggestions for individuals or firms that we might engage. Because we have, this has been prolonged. It it's just gone on too long. So I'd like to give, that's just my one out of seven opinion. I'd like to give Mr. Pro Padraza the um go ahead to um. Investigate some firms and then we're we're one step ahead. At our next meeting rather than than starting at this point. If these people don't, and now if these people work out, I'll be dancing. Very well.
Absolutely. And that is and if for some reason our candidates being interviewed tomorrow are watching that that is absolutely our hope and our preference. And again, um, it is something that uh again is always option number one. Um, however, again, it's just a matter of uh making sure the time of peeing out the essence.
Yeah, no, I I agree with Michelle. If we can do something to expedite the um the process, that's good. I do want to say of the two options, I'm not sure I could come up with a third, but. I am much more com- comfortable hiring a recruiting firm. Than going to a contract services to do our accounting work. That makes me very uncomfortable. Um, I want somebody dedicated to our school district to do that. Um, but I I do agree that. Um, expedite in the process to give you approval to look into recruiting firms with might be a good option. Stuart, did you have something?
Yeah, um, actually, I'm. I had a brief conversation with Mr. Padraz about this when I started looking at. That we were still looking for CFO. Um, I went on my LinkedIn. Uh, to see if I could network, if I knew anybody. Uh, and made a connection uh with someone who I had a brief conversation with. Who actually lives in Newport uh or works at and it was. Lincoln or Newport, but anyway, um, does contracting work. He does in fact. Uh, have a business where he works and has been doing this kind of work. Uh, with school districts, saving a tremendous amount of money. For the school district while not giving up uh the number of hours necessary to. Make sure that all of the Ts are crossed, all the Is are dotted. Um, and I think it does behoove us in these budgetary times to at least take a look. And have a conversation, either have him come here to speak to us in some way. Have some type of a discussion to really understand if that's a viable oper- uh opportunity.
So my my concern is this position. It's it's not just doing the accounting. It's doing the budget, going to every subcommittee meeting. Going to the town council, being at a joint meetings. Meeting one on one with Brian De Silva from the town level. That it it's not. I don't think it's as easy as saying we're going to hire a company to come in and do this. The role is just. Um, and it's a lot in one person. We're very small districts, so we have these a a person like that that wears many roles. They are also in charge of of our HR. It of all of our contracts. I mean. Uh, for a small district where that one person is kind of so integral. I would rather have our own in-house person. That's my personal opinion. But you know, that's why having people um. That can come and explain things to us and layman's terms and be at all these meetings. It's a it's a lot of meetings. Uh, it's a big time commitment. I I I agree. We we should never just not. Look at something, especially if we can save money. But I don't think this is an area where saving, you know, it's like. Pennywise and pound foolish kind of thing. But.
Yeah.
So having sat here for the last five years and um. The amount of uh turnover that we have. Um, for various reasons in the CFO has been one of those. Um, I would hate to see us go back down that road again. So I think it's very important that we. Do what we need to do in recruitment. Of this individual because we need this person to be permanent as Cal is speaking to. There's so many roles. And I understand the saving of money and all of that, but this can't, this is not a situation where. It's about saving money. It is a situation about filling a permanent position for a deputy. To assure that. We as a committee understand what this person is presented to us, what this person is doing with our budget, what this person. Recommends us to do as committee. Um, to ensure that we are spending the dollars effectively for. Our facilities, our students' success, you know, I I have to say that I. Would agree with Michelle. How that we give the directive tonight for the superintendent to. Look into the recruiters that we may entertain every meeting.
Yeah, if I could, I just want to make sure that I'm not ever. I'm not saying that I'm looking at this through a looking glass of only the budgetary issue. I would never want. Or expect that the position that a person would fill would not. Completely take care of everything, be at every meeting, whatever the responsibilities were. That would be part of the conversation that whatever we deem as responsibilities, activities, meetings and everything else. If they could fulfill on those things, if they can't, then I would agree that we don't take a look at that. I'm I I'm just trying not to. Push something aside that's a possibility.
Yeah, I would I would look at these as as like options A and and B and and much prefer option A as far as the um recruiter going out to find someone permanent. And I think. I I appreciate the out of box thinking as far as potentially going with purchase services or going with uh an individual who can devote some time to us. I I do think it needs to be a dedicated full-time employee who can work uh whenever we need because our times when we. You know, there's town meetings or you know, there are, there's, it's a big commitment and I would. Not really want to trust that to someone who's not committed to us in the sense of of being a full-time employee of of the the district. Um, that that would be my concern. Just it's makes me uncomfortable to have that. Level of responsibility farmed out to a part-time employee or a part, you know, or a part-time contractor or. Um, a purchase server, you know, firm that that does this. I think we need. That dedication and we need to have that stability. I think if we did go with the root of a contractor or a purchase service or something. That just pushes that along like that just means we're that much further from stability in that role. Uh, and I much prefer to see, you know, someone who can be there. For, you know, a a a long time, hopefully, at least more than a year.
So I I can, so the one piece that I would add and then I appreciate and I. You know, the 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 tiered piece, some things though that um. I I would in some cases like to go and investigate both options and bring them before the committee. My only because of number one, the time of year. Um, by the time we get a recruiter, the time of year is somebody going to leave that position? And even if they are, what is the timeline that we have? Um, we are losing Mr. Ferrucci's services. Um, also, um, the uh pool of interims of or retirees. And this is maybe where the committee could also take some action by contacting our legislature is that administrators. Uh, were not included in the general assemblies. Extension of retirees uh to work in education. Only teachers. Are granted the 180 days where other building administrators are also or administrators in general are only at the 90 day. Um, which is dwindling than that pool of already limited uh candidates. So whether it be. A a stopgap or until we get somebody on boarded that we have some level. And again, it wouldn't be a, you know, no contracts or things would be signed, but. A a better picture of of. Districts who may have done this and their experience and potential um. Firms or corporations that that would do such work and the level of service that they would provide.
Um, I think. I think we all agree our number one option would be that a candidate that's in the process right now with the interviews works out that we, you know. I'm so hopeful that that's going to happen um with the candidates we we are looking at right now. Um, but I guess the directive then would be. If we have to, if that doesn't work out. Yes, look at both of the options. I think you can hear the preference that we really. We need a a dedicated person, but if you want to look at both options. With the anticipation, you'll bring those options back to us to review before any action.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I would love to hear more about the the other, you know, option other than going with a recruiter. And I agree with Madam Chair that I think we need to have um. You know, I I we hope someone works out, you know, from from this interview process, the current process. And that's that's obviously, you know, the the first priority, first. Preference for all of us. But I also wanted to ask a question. Um, how much longer is Mr. Ferrucci with us for?
My um hot and fast date is that I end up leaving the state by mid-October. I'll be out of town. Um, I believe I'm somewhere in the neighborhood of uh 40 days of service um for retirement purposes. So I probably have another 50 days worth of availability or 100 days at half day, the way they do the counting. I'm happy to commit my services as much as I can and much as possible between now and October. Um, even when I was here previously, uh, I'm more than happy to sustain on a long-distance relationship in Zoom and then come back for public meetings. However, the district um sees things that starts to unfold. So what the best, the strongest evidence is the October that I'm not here. But we're doing about two, two and a half days a week for a 40-hour job. There's things not getting done and I get that. Um, so I appreciate your patience with us and and a thank you for your support. On the things we are accomplishing. It means a lot uh to myself and the staff in the building. They're incredible.
Okay, which I would also like to to shout out. So if candidates are watching or perspective or otherwise, again, the the team that Mr. Ferrucci and that the district has to work with. Um, and that is in place is is they're they're fantastic. They do just as good, you know, that level of work and make this make this all possible. So.
It'll it'll be a cake walk, right?
Easy job.
That's super.
Easiest job.
I'm sorry, that is that is an assistant super.
But thank you, Mr. Ferrucci. And you've been so wonderful to fill in and and we can't. I mean, I appreciate all you've done. I know how hard it is on a part-time basis to to do this work and you've done a phenomenal job. And I'm hoping that you'll be available to help us train and and transition somebody that comes in. Um, because you've been here twice now. Because you've been here twice now, so you know us really well.
Yes, and I'm proud of the opportunity that you've you offered. The decision to come back was really predicated on the development and growth of the business office staff. Okay, when myself and the interim superintendent, Mr. Bob Litterfield, came on district, the staff were hungry. And they kept telling us, you know, this, that, the other thing, we were like, okay, well, we would ask their opinion. And they were like, oh, mom, mom. Now, they have team meetings, they problem solve, they get resolution, they've embraced their roles. So when I was offered the position this last time, it was to see the team get developed and be excited about the prospects and the success we had. I was more than happy and extremely pleased to say yes, because there's a great team here, and I want to be the leader of that team. And I want to reinforce to them that there will be better days. It's the same thing that happened two years ago during the transition. It got better. And there's a great leadership team in place to sustain it. And so we're just going to fill that one critical role and the rest of the staff will run with it. And they're doing a great, great job. That's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you. That feedback is greatly appreciated. And and I know we have a wonderful staff and it's it's nice to, you know, a shout out to them for their hard work. Thank you so much. Somebody else want to say anything before we move on?
Yep, go ahead. Don't know if Mr. Padraz needs us to make a motion or Mr. Pollack can come.
No, the discussion wasn't a directive, a discussion. I appreciate.
Yeah, we'll be, if we need to make any decisions, we'll be at the next meeting when he presents, here's a contract for recruiter, here's a contract for services, whatever.
Or here's a contract for our next CFO.
Our contract for next CFO, hopefully.
Yeah, that would be, that would be the best thing. Thank you.
So then we're ready to move on. I was hoping Kate would be back, but we're very lucky that we have other people that sit on the school building committee for the last discussion items, the school building committee update. So I'm going to turn to the superintendent. Maybe he can start that update?
Absolutely. So we met, the building committee met last Thursday. Ultimately, the long distance or the extra steps you got in today is the exciting, most exciting news, and that the site enabling work has begun, which ultimately means the curb cut and the new traffic pattern and parking for hazard as well as, again, fencing starting to go up again, that that preliminary work. Another aspect of discussion that is still up in the air, though, right now, is the the use of the Hazard Building by the Gilbane and the construction team. We continue to work with Gilbane, Gilbane's council and local council, making sure that all of the, again, the as as we say, safe, you know, safe, engaged, future focused, that we are really focusing in on that safety aspect and ensuring not only the safety of the workers here, but obviously of all of our students, faculty, and staff. And so we are trying to make sure that the district and the taxpayers are also protected by them occupying that space and using that space throughout construction. Then in terms of, there was exciting news, however, it will be it will be held in, it's a more of a long-term piece in that the early bid packages have have come in and are being recommend are being recommended to the town council. And the exciting piece is that currently, and again, there's lots of bidding still and lots of project to go, is that there are some savings in those early bid packages, the things that we're worried about that we over the past few months, steel, the impact of tariffs, those things are being accounted for, and we're seeing good numbers at this stage of the game. Long, it's a long game, but it looks like, to use a golf analogy, we had a nice hit off the tee. So but still a lot more strokes to go though. Currently, or and actually, I heard from Dr. McGair today, still working on those first day logistics, especially in terms of traffic patterns. What seems like a good idea in theory, then all of a sudden you think about local dynamics or, well, really, traffic flows from this part, or you can't make a left that's going to back everybody. We, so we have some iterations in terms of those the the traffic patterns. I did, however, put in my email to the community to be aware of that. If anybody in the community is watching this in terms of who drop parent drop off, please utilize the buses. We pay for them. More than likely, unless you opted out, you are being accounted for and have a stop. And if you, and if not, plan early because traffic is, it's going to be an iterative process. There, our first design is not going to be the perfect design, and I don't know that there's going to be a perfect design. And so it will be an iterative process. So I'll thank the community in advance for getting up a little bit earlier or taking making helping students to take the bus so that we can minimize the traffic impact. But again, as of right now, everything is going according to plan and is going very well. There were some other updates in terms of the land swap was paperwork was getting ready to be submitted. Dr. McGair, I believe, has a, will be having a subcommittee of his school improvement team here because one of the pieces is that this building has lots of memorials and dedication areas. How to make sure that those are catalogued and accounted for in the new building is underway or will be a project that will be ongoing. And then the last piece was because of the amount of projects and the amount of soil and removal as well as removal, but yet we want to then keep that piece is that we will be blocking off some areas and that we have, because we're going to have stockpiles of soil that those have been accounted for, spaces identified for safe storage, as well as then security, both again, from that safety and access. It is also being developed at this time. At our next meeting, which I believe is next Thursday, we will continue with that update, again, have the town council, if they, the the action that they took or did not take on the agenda, as well as then continued pushing, if you will, or development of the plans for the Curtis Corner field update that we hope to have moving forward. Because once we start getting here up and running, we expect that that work and project can start getting the attention, some more attention and get the community support behind it. And I hope that was the building committee.
So for the traffic patterns, have you reached out to the to Chief Moynihan and with?
So, yep, Dr. McGair is working with with the Queens Asaro in in terms of the traffic patterns and going through it. We got feedback from the initial plan. Mr. Lonigan got feedback from the bus company, and that's being taken into account and discussed. And so there is another version. So that we're on the rough draft number two and will continue to look to that.
Any other questions?
I would like to suggest that since we met from 8:30 to 2:30 today and seem to be at the end of our agenda, I am happily to offer that we adjourn this meeting at 8 o'clock.
I have a motion for adjournment. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes for adjourned. Thank you all.